We're already in session, so we don't have to call it session. We can do the pledge.
We will go back into open session.
We already did.
Okay.
Yep, we are.
Well, we're going to go back into open session now. Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023. Please stand for the pledge of the week.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Forward and up, board.
Okay. Minutes and reports received and filed.
Yes, we have the reporters' April 2023 fees, the county clerk's April 2023 fees, and the auditors' April 2023 revenue expenditure report.
Okay. Commissioner committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Thursday, we have Cole County Communities, Cole County Extension Meeting, Council Thursday evening, Eastside Business Association Friday morning. I think that's about it until next week.
What time is it, Eastside?
7:45. I'm not sure what it's at yet.
Can you send that to me?
Yeah, I'll forward it to you when I get done with my email.
A couple of four of us meetings tomorrow on ARPA. Thursday, Westside Business Association in the morning, four of us later than the day. And Friday, a meeting with Public Works about Wildwood Extension.
Okay, tonight I've got a Stars and Stripes Dinner. Tomorrow, I've got a meeting with the Stars and Stripes Director. Thursday, Communities. I'm going to go to St. Peter's School for their last day of school. Friday and Saturday is Shelby Fest. Sunday is the Porch Fest on Fairmount Boulevard. Monday is Harry S. Truman's birthday. That's all I've got. Commission comments? Bids and contracts. Bid award of 2023-12 Concrete and Concrete Products.
So we bid concrete, concrete products on April 20th. Jessica was handling this and she's out today, so I'm speaking on her behalf regarding the award of these items. So in the past, we've always piggybacked off of Jefferson City's bid for concrete and concrete products, basically just buying concrete for projects that we do in-house. We discussed and felt it'd be better if we did this on our own, give us a little more flexibility for buying concrete and buying it in areas where we need it. So attached to the bid tabs, we had bids from Farmers Concrete, Weber Ready Mix, and Cole County Industries. And as we do on most of these types of material bids or product bids, is we would award to lowest based on availability. So what happens is the lowest, we call them, and if they can get it at the certain time that we need it, we'll go with that. If they can't, then we can go to the next one. And that's typically what we do on this type of thing. So we would just recommend, per Jessica's advice on this, is to award it based on lowest and availability.
Okay, I'm good. All right, make a motion to award to concrete and concrete products on the lowest and availability.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Signing of subaward agreement for fiscal year '22, Cole County.
I don't even know if that is. That's an ARPA thing, right?
I have no idea.
If it's a sub-agreement.
Subaward agreement for '22.
I think that's, I think that's mine.
I think that's yours.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this is for the R-SOC, and we get several of these annually. So Sam, I'm sorry, I'm probably going to create a cramp in your hand today.
Do I have to initial each page?
Yes, unfortunately, and they're in double copy.
I know, I know.
I'm going to start calling you John.
As long as I just do this annually, right? It's okay.
Can I have it, you only have it today, I can have it done by next week?
That's right. Take your time, please. But these are awarded by R-SOC. They help sustain our HSR-T, our hazmat team, and the MEOC. We do have some annual sustainment, like our generator sustainment through our R-SOC. The Elliott system, we put back onto the R-SOC, and so that contract should be paid by them very shortly. And then any other projects, which we don't have any outside projects that we have other than those.
I think it's over there, if you want to.
Yeah, I could each, I could give each of you one.
You know we're both against it, we can sign them all.
He's going to take separate motions, I guess?
I think, I think we'll need separate, yeah.
You have a motion to sign the, I'm going to get the Cole County EMA Generator Load Testing Subaward Agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Don, you will get these later.
And there's two of these, is that right?
There's, there's only one, but there's double copies.
Two copies, yeah.
Right, so.
It's two copies, so.
A motion to sign the Cole County EMA HSR-T Subaward Agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A motion to sign the Cole County EMA Badging Subaward Agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A motion to sign the Cole County EMA MEOC, MEOC for those listening at home, Subaward Agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
That is?
Thank you, sir. Yes.
Okay. Contract renewal for the MODHSS Adult Brain Injury Service Coordination.
Good morning.
Morning.
This is the, I guess, third, second year of this contract for the Adult Brain Injury Service Coordination. This is for that service coordinator's benefits, salary, and expenses. She serves, I think, 13 counties out of Cole County, has about 55 to 65 clients at every, any given time. No increase in funding, unfortunately, this year.
Make a motion to sign the program services contract for the Adult Brain Injury Program Service Coordination.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Do we have any unfinished business? New business, Accounts Payable Review.
I asked for approval of accounts payable pending review.
So moved to approve accounts payable pending review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, awarding of Sheriff's Department Data Room Buildout Project is your...
So we have three bids to build out the data room and the training room. Professional contractors, engineers, Prost Builders, and Little Dixie. Little Dixie came in the middle at 1.4, $1,498,707,707. Anyway, it's a big number. And their completion date is 285 days, which is 30 days less than everybody else. While it's the middle one, my recommendation is go with Little Dixie, and the only reason is because they just did the Callaway County Jail, and they did a really good job, and they're used to working within a detention, and that's the only thing I'm basing it on. So it's whatever you guys want to do. But I think it's going to be between Little Dixie and Prost, and I, like I said, since I'm familiar with Little Dixie on the construction part of it, I would go, I would ask them to go with Little Dixie.
You had to talk to us, I agree.
You've already sent this to, or we discussed this earlier.
We didn't get a copy of that, I couldn't find anywhere, so I said...
Of the plan itself, I don't think you did.
I don't remember seeing that either. I can't find even a deleted email that had that, so. I mean, I was looking at it a while ago when you were showing us.
I was asked earlier this morning about the Architects Alliance attendance here, and I, I told them, oh, here we go, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, and I told them 9:15, but I'm glad they came early, so in case there's any issues there, there are questions with them, right?
Anyway, do you have everything I have now?
Then money's coming out of contingency.
Yes, sir, it'll all come out of my contingency.
When we were talking about it earlier, that the design of building out interstitial area, this is part of that design.
Yes, it's not going to, it's not going to take anything away of our, of the buildout of the interstitial area once we decide to push forward with that.
Okay. Got the money in there, I guess, Debbie?
Contingency, yeah.
So.
Oh, when you and I discussed it, Sheriff, you, you put a premium on the 30 days, too. That's worth something, right, to you?
It's, yeah, absolutely. Every little bit of time counts, because it's, so what I'm doing, as you well know, is I'm changing the security envelope for my facility. I can't change a security envelope unless I have a server room, a data room to put it in. So before I can even bid out the, the security envelope side of it, I have to have a data room in there that's capable of containing all of the servers and the wiring that's going to need. I think the appropriate is gizmos, I believe is the appropriate word. If Brian was here, that's what he said I should hear.
What are you doing? Checking out?
So you got $28,000 difference?
Yes, sir.
And 45 days?
Yes, sir. Oh, 45, I'm sorry, I knew it was a little over a month.
Yeah, I thought you said only 30 days a while ago, but that was one of the points of going with that bid is to get it done in a quicker turnaround, so.
Well, I think the fact they've worked, you know, they know how to work in a jail, I think that is, that is worth a lot.
And I think the majority of that time is lead time to order parts, isn't that correct?
That is correct. The majority of that time is because the sub-putting in the data centers has long, long lead times. So they may not even start, I mean, they may physically be on site for a while till they get some of their equipment done.
I just hope it doesn't take like a year, year and a half, but...
275 days, so.
Yeah, I'm good.
A motion to award the data and training room contract to Little Dixie Construction LLC for $1,498,707.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Boy, Architects Alliance is really good.
I just want to add, from Architects Alliance, and from you, Sheriff, we need those bids here, the county clerk copies of, the originals are here.
Okay.
They are.
Yeah, Jessica gave us copies, but the original she should have. Yeah. I have, no, I have, I don't have that there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we did the bid opening here.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Mo.FRE Grant Amendment.
So as you know, we received a grant from MoDOT through the Freight Enhancement Program for the multimodal transload facility in the amount of $880,000, and that represents 50% of Phase 1, is what we were calling it when we submitted the grant application. And Phase 1 was work that we knew we could get done and pay out before the grant deadline of June 15th. So in doing that, we had an agreement with MoDOT, and in the process of that, a little miscommunication, and what the reimbursement rate was set in the grant agreement was, it was set at 27%, which 880,000 at the time was 27% of the total projected cost. Looking back on it and getting ready to start the project, realized that 27%, if we submit invoices up to the amount that we expected to get done by June 15th, we wouldn't get full reimbursement. So in working with MoDOT, they agreed that, yeah, we need to change that reimbursement rate. That is now changed to 50%. That's shown in the grant amendment, and so what that'll do is allow us to, as we submit our invoices, we'll be able to recapture or get reimbursed the 880, which is the maximum amount. So no big deal, just a mutual agreement with MoDOT that we needed to change the agreement to reflect that as 50% reimbursement rate. And in approving this, the project's getting ready to start, and we'll be set to receive that full amount. So this is, we asked that the commission approve this amendment to the, to the agreement with MoDOT, and it is a DocuSign agreement, so.
Yes, they've been sending me...
Emails.
Punches.
So commission will approve this, you won't sign anything right now, and Sam will just sign it through DocuSign, and it'll go to the clerk and auditor, correct, Joe? I know Joe was working with MoDOT to get the proper people in the chain, so should be good to go. Any questions?
I'm good.
Motion for Sam to DocuSign.
Make a motion for Sam to DocuSign the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Amendment Number 1 to Agreement for Freight Enhancement Program.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd be happy to give an update at the end of the meeting on the project, if you'd like, or if we're...
Well, we're almost to the end.
I can do a real quick, if you're okay, and Luke's here, he can add to that, the project. We had the pre-construction meeting last week, the notice to proceed was yesterday, so they're officially noticed that they can start work. It's Don Seater's excavating. As of now, they're scheduled to start May 15th, so in a little less than two weeks, they'll be onsite and starting to work. They're starting to order materials. Part of receiving the grant from MoDOT is submitting invoices for work done or materials in their purchase that we can do, store materials and payment for that. So a lot of moving parts to make sure we get all this money back from MoDOT. That's the first task, you know, get the, maximize what we get from MoDOT, so that's on track, and we should be fine on that. I would expect to see some dirt moving really soon. It's, it's a big project, a lot of, again, moving parts to make sure all this happens. Completion dates by the end of the year, it's a, it's a calendar day completion, so we'll count calendar days on the contractor, but it'll roughly be done by the end of the year. Still have a good lead on additional funding to make up the difference of what we're needing. Luke, if you want to elaborate on that a little bit, I think it'd be good. Again, we've got the MoDOT grant, we've got the EDA grant, and then we had city-county cooperative funds in the amount of $800,000 towards it. So all that money adds up to roughly 3.2 million, and the contracted amount is 4.3. And we've worked with Union Pacific, and they've added a little bit to that, we still got to work through that. And then there's other things that Luke can speak to regarding additional funding.
Well, good morning. So we, we do have an outstanding application to USDA rule development. I believe we, we made an initial request of $200,000 in grant funding to assist with the, the project buildout. Latest communication, they say, would be late spring, early summer, that we'd find out about that grant. And then I think kind of the, the biggest one that we're continuing to track, that, you know, my superstitiousness doesn't want me to really discuss too much of, but some potential assistance through the state legislative body on, on an appropriation to complement, and I think further match the, the local and federal and other state investments going into the project. So it is within a current House budget bill within the Missouri Department of Transportation, which is going to Conference Committee, I think starts today. So we'll continue to track that and, you know, encourage and support those reviewing that and discussing it to see if we can get that money here to Cole County to support the project.
We'll know the answer to that on Friday afternoon, correct?
Correct, by end of this week.
Okay. I, I noticed the vehicle stopped at a light, same as I did on 50 this morning, and it said JB Hunt Intermodal on the tractor, on the cab, and it had a containerized... When, when will that thing be landing out in our facility?
Well, we hope it's capable by the end of the year. Now, we've discussed and we've approved the, moving forward with an agreement with WATCO and Capital, the operator. The operator would be responsible for having the equipment there for unloading, you know, loading and unloading, also a track mobile to move cars around. That's ongoing discussions with Union Pacific as to what exactly that's going to look like. So a lot of moving parts to seeing what you're asking for, Harry, when we can actually see operations happening, but I would expect, you know, early next year, you know, as soon as that thing's there, we're going to be promoting it. I know we, the team put together some, some drawings, you know, 3D renderings of what we're going to do, and that's going to be, JC Rep will be out promoting it as well as the operator. So it's a combination of many, many people involved and many groups involved to make this happen, but very, very encouraging.
Yeah, I think continuing to, you know, draw excitement to the, to the project from, you know, what it could deliver, the, the benefit of it. And so, you know, from an industry perspective, we're continuing to engage with, you know, local, regional groups about what that opportunity could be. But then also, you know, coordinating and working with WATCO, Capital, and I think UP as well to a certain extent about when and what would be necessary in order to actually start loading and unloading for businesses, so, you know, which helps the, the operating entity and what they purchase based on kind of the use case. So what's, what's really the high demand use initially, that's kind of the first point to purchase for equipment and machinery to, to load and unload. So I'd say early, mid next calendar year, should start to see commercial use.
Related question to put you on the dime here is, will they be able to gas up out there at that time?
All things look positive.
Okay.
I'm not 100% certain, but I've heard that there may be some construction work beginning over there, just, just recently, some prepping for some fittings and foundations, so.
And again, we don't have that agreement done with Capital and WATCO, but we, WATCO's been assisting in setting up some of these items, initial items with Union Pacific, so it's an ongoing partnership, even though it's not agreed to yet, we still got to work out those terms, but we're going to get there soon.
Good.
All right, thank you all.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Parking lease agreement. We have been looking for a lot for the sheriff since we're taking, he's kind enough to, to give his lot to EMS.
Whose lot is that? County lot?
Not right now.
No, and so anyway, we, we have looked at lots and looked at lots, and we, talking with the city, we, we picked a lot we would like to have. So Friday afternoon at 4:20 PM, I received a lease for the lot that, that we would like to lease, effective date, May 1st. So we're, we're a day behind. But anyway, we have a lease for this lot, which, are you paying for that, or is EMS going to pay?
EMS is paying for it, sure. It's, I think the, the lease said $500 a month, and then there was a $500 inconvenience fee for the Sheriff's Department, so.
But anyway, we, we, we received it, and I've passed it on to our attorney and you and...
Some questions about that. If we're going to use law enforcement, I assume we're using law enforcement with sales tax money for that. If it is, I'd like to go ahead and do a contingency and just go ahead and pay off the rest of the year, so we don't have to worry about it this year. And then who takes care of the pushing the snow and all that stuff off that lot? Because Craig has done an outstanding job for us on that corner lot for my staff to be able to park there. So if we're leasing that from the city, is the city responsible for pushing that snow off, or is it Eric?
I would like to say they would, but I, I don't know. I, I didn't even...
I bet they won't.
I, yeah, I...
Greg, who plowed the Methodist Church lot before we bought that? You did? That was the city lot?
City wasn't touching. When I got here, the city wasn't even touching.
What's it say on the lease?
Nothing, says nothing about that on the lease. So I do not think that the city is required to, the lessor is not required to do that.
Where does that, which lot is that?
It's addressed at 317 Adams.
It's a lot that's catty corner to the, the Red Cross, the old Red Cross building. So if you go down the alleyway, right, right across from our jail, go down the alleyway, it's right there on the...
Kind of a hind cap, just down from the Baptist Building.
Yeah, it's the lot right beside the Baptist Building.
The chief is hiding from me over there. Chief, what, what is the address of the new facility?
I believe that is a 317 Adams.
That's correct.
It's the same address? Okay.
Yeah, it's, I know the address of that lot is 311, I looked it up. What it says on the lease is correct.
What's 311?
Where's 311?
That lot, yeah.
The lease says 317.
The lot is 311. I was going to say, that's in the 400s lot.
Our mailing address is 311 East...
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, we, we are 311.
Adam Street.
311 is our hind street address. The tenant's address is 311.
I thought it said 311 Adams.
No, 317 Adams.
317 Adams is the address.
Of the property. At least its address is Adams.
317 Adams Street is the tract of land that they are talking about in the lease.
Yes.
And it's in agreement with, or in connection with the construction of the new EMS substation at 319 Adam Street.
Oh, okay, there you go. I knew, whatever the number was, I looked it up on GIS, and it was, I don't know how they get that, but that's what they got.
At least we have you parking, Sheriff.
I'll push that out to my staff, and I'll check the lighting out tonight.
You'll look at the signage?
I'm going to, I'm going to look into that also. But I didn't know who, do I need to cite, ask Brett about it? Brett Smith about the, the snow and...
This came from Brett, so yes, that's, I would...
I think that's going to be on us.
Yeah. Public Works one there.
We do the bigger parking lots downtown.
Yeah, Public Works. Hey, I got your parking, I...
I appreciate that. Are there parking bumpers? There's not. But we'll get some, does that help?
No. Didn't y'all just get a new machine?
Yeah.
So y'all should be able to do it with that thing, too, for that matter.
Yeah, like I said, we'll be able to take care of it.
Okay.
This is a month-to-month, we, we're good with that, right? I mean, it, it's not for a term of years, it's month-to-month, as I read it.
Yeah, he doesn't want to pay for it all for one year, so.
Well, I mean, but month-to-month, either party, in a month-to-month lease, either party can say next month's the last month, right?
There's no parking, nobody's parking in that block, so I would say sometime in the future, after we win the lottery, we'll just buy it.
I'm not buying a lot if I win the lottery, I'm going to tell you that much.
A lot of things I'm going to buy, that's not one of them.
And I'm going to be more of a pain in your butt then.
You won't even be here.
Well, I'll be around.
We could make it the Jeff Halsher...
Yeah, the memorial, that'd be great.
Parking.
I'm, I'm fine with getting this, the lot, we do need to find some parking for the sheriff since we're doing another project on that other lot, so.
I'll make a motion to sign the lease agreement with the City of Jefferson for the property addressed as 317 Adams Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So is that going to be law enforcement sales tax money in, I assume?
We're all putting purchase order out.
So when we got that lot, did we buy that with law enforcement money?
Yeah, the EMS, the EMS station, that property, EMS heavy, we switched the money.
So then we probably need to reimburse the law enforcement for that lot, and then I would say the parking in that other lot would come from law enforcement. And I mean, if they're, if they want to sell it, let's see how much they want to sell it for, if you think that's going to be a long-term forever thing.
I don't think they were interested in that, not right now. Well, we need to begin negotiations on the cost of that lot, don't we?
Well, was the, the property behind the, that we acquired off of the alley back here, was that the city, or was that the city parking authority? There's a difference.
We bought the city.
The city, okay. And this is the city? And this is the city? All right, so that one was $1,000 a month rent? And the, if the price was 100?
I think so. I think, I think.
So if this is 500 a month, maybe it's. Yeah.
John bought his from the Baptist.
So I don't assume, how much we pay you?
I have, I have.
Reimbursed them that.
The contract, I can tell you.
Yeah, they approached us on that, so, and I, I don't remember.
I think it was a million dollars.
Now that you're.
Trust me, I'm a cop. Right to chip.
Between our auditor and our finance person, they could work up a journal entry to make this fit, right? All right.
You find the cost of that, for the journal entry.
Okay. You have anything else? Yes, please.
Okay. So several years ago, probably five or six, we adopted an ordinance to join St. Louis County's prescription drug monitoring program, because at that time, the state of Missouri didn't have one. And that gives, you know, pharmacists and doctors access to patient records, so they can see what medications they're taking to make sure they're not, you know, double dipping or there's going to be contraindications. Well, the state last year passed legislation to implement a statewide prescription drug monitoring program. They've hired a coordinator and now they went out for bid for a contractor. They have hired the same contractor as St. Louis County, so they will be implementing it statewide. There's a kind of wrinkle, though, with the way our ordinances were written, very specific about who can have access to that system, we cannot give the state of Missouri access to our records, because they don't fit into one of the categories. So we will have to change our ordinance if we want them to have access to the past records of patient files. And the city, I think we adopted one and then the City of Jefferson did, so I'll have to talk to the new mayor about that. I guess the, the detriment, if we say, sorry, state of Missouri, you can't have any of our records, is when the new state of Missouri system takes over, they'll have the user database, like the pharmacist, but all those records will be gone. The, the old St. Louis system will shut down, so they won't be able to say, you know, whether, you know, so-and-so's grandma is in the nursing home and when she needs to get off that medicine, so it's not contraindicated for the new medicine that doctor prescribed. So we, I suspect, you know, I would recommend that we go ahead and change our ordinance to let the state of Missouri have access to those records. It's, it's only going to hurt the patients if we don't.
Can you send that to Bill?
We're waiting on St. Louis County to provide us the draft language.
They did the original one.
Yeah, they did the original. They're supposed to be providing us with some language, but I know there's been some news stories.
Why do they need the access?
Because why does who need the access?
Why does the state need the access?
Because they're implementing the program statewide.
To make sure somebody's not abusing the program. But that's not going to affect Grandma Housher over here, who, my doctor's going to know what she's had or hasn't.
Well, the doctor, no, that, the system that exists right now, that the doctor has been accessing, once the new state system goes into implementation, the doctors, that old system will shut down. They will not have access to that anymore, so they would not have access to doc, to Grandma Housher's records anymore. That system will be dead. And there will be a new system.
There's got to be some way for them to find out what pharmaceuticals Grandma had.
If we give them access to our records.
That can't be the only access, that don't sound right. I don't know.
It's like there's this database and the state is opening a new one. And unless we say, state, you can have access to this old one, their new one will start from scratch.
I'm just a little wary of giving state access to stuff, so that's why I'm cautious.
Yeah, and that, and that's why we wrote the ordinances, the way that, you know, that was very specific. But we want that old, we want doctors to be able to access that old database. And if the state implements a new one, we don't want them to just have to start over.
Here, here's a hypothetical.
Okay.
Grandma X has had a history of prescriptions. And three years ago, when this one prescription was given to her, she almost died. Wouldn't their caregivers like to know that she had a terrible reaction to that and we're never going to give her that again?
Well, there's two scenarios, though. It should be in her medical record if she has the same pharmacist.
If.
Or the same, and the same doctor.
If.
Right. But if she doesn't, you know, I mean, I had a personal situation where, you know, we had a, a family that was in a nursing home, that, right, until they had a prescription drug, in a different state, until they had a prescription drug monitoring program, had been to several doctors and had gotten several medications. And until they got the prescription drug monitoring program and the nursing home was able to look at everything, she was taking too much medication, she couldn't even play cards. But then once they got her medication straight out, you know, it was better. So yes, we want doctors and pharmacists to have access to those old records. But when the state system takes over, that new system is going to be shut off. Or the old system will be shut off, the new system will start from scratch.
I think we ought to take the lead from St. Louis, what, because, I mean, they're, they're the big dog in this one.
Right. And they're, they're going to be giving us some sample language. I just wanted to give you a heads up, because I know there's been some news articles about the new state program.
You won't ever hear me say I just want to do it because St. Louis is doing it. Anything.
No, but, but their, their health department was very.
You know, the, the prescription monitoring program was really, I thought originally put together because of the doctor shopping, somebody who wanted oxycodone from three different doctors and was getting three prescriptions at the same time.
Correct, that's, that's one of, yeah, that's one of the reasons, for sure.
So they, they were able to find these abusers that way.
Correct.
But there's a other hidden benefit, which is the history of non-abusers.
Correct.
If I want to find something in my medical history, I'm going to go to my provider, my pharmacist, I'll be able to find out. Without this system, I really don't think you have to have this system to find out my medical history.
But, but your doctor left town.
Yeah.
The pharmacist.
I had to go find a new.
Oh, well, okay.
This is just another tool, you know?
I, I don't know.
It, it took, it took Holly Rader eight years in the House and several years in the Senate to get this done, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so.
But it wasn't done to try to protect your medical history and so that you can find out what meds you've had or prescriptions you've had. This is for the PDMP, so if people aren't out there abusing the program. So that's why I don't, I just don't believe that. It's something that you won't be able to find your history somehow, some way.
It's just an extra tool.
This is just a first effort and that's why I'm throwing it out there.
And that's why I wanted to bring it up, because we're going to be getting language, so it's something to think about.
There's two drugs I have reactions to, and having surgery in Columbia or where, it's in my medical record. And I go, yeah, I go, okay, you're, you're, can't take these? Yes, I can't.
Whiskies?